Welcome, everybody, to the fifth and final CGEIT exam preparation. Today, we're going to wrap up our fifth show, and today we have Karina Clever, Garrett Greyjack, and Kelly Gilmore. Garrett, would you like to start off and say hello to everybody?
Oh, I want Karina to start. She's the big GRC star. Go for it, Karina.
All right. Well, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. This is our final five out of five session. Very excited. We've been through a lot of information, and we hope that it's been valuable to you, even if you're not getting the CGEIT, if you are especially, but really great governance overview for everybody from the board down all the way, all company-wide. So I'm the CEO of Clever Compliance. We stand up GRC COE, Centers of Excellence, for companies in all different industries, and very excited to be here to close this out.
Hey, Kelly.
Hi, welcome, everyone. Happy to be joining the team here again and going over these questions and exam prep. I'm like you, well, hopefully, I'm prepping for an exam, so I'm excited to learn more from Karina on the answers here to these questions and how to think in an SCGEIT way, because it definitely seems to be a way of thought. So, welcome, everyone, and I just want to say I'm happy to be here.
Garrett?
Yes, and look what I got, y'all. Look at this fun thing. Came in the mail. Wife gave it to me the other day. A CIG CGIT certificate. So, there you go. So, it's been a good class. It's, you know, we, trust me, I would have not gotten this without listening to the answers of Kelly, who was doing Real World. Basically, CISO work, his mortgage company, and Karina, who is literally one of the busiest and best persons I've ever listened to about governance. Okay, I myself have built a product with a team, with people like Bill helping me get it out, getting the word out, a compliance tool, an identity audit tool called UATSS. But with that being said, let's get into it, Bill, because can everyone see the screen?
Everybody can see it. Okay. Yeah. So, question one today is, which of the following outputs is the most important for developing an enterprise architecture vision? Is it A, a strategic roadmap, B, enterprise strategy, C, organizational structure, or D, a value proposition? Garrett, you want to kick it off?
That's good, because I'm going, right now, my brain's a little blank. Is it between a roadmap and enterprise strategy? As well as I'm developing an enterprise, trying to develop a strategy. I'm going with a strategic roadmap. I'm watching Karina's expression on that. So, there you go.
Kelly?
Um, I ran through these questions myself, and I actually answered this one, the enterprise strategy B. But again, yeah, kind of looking towards Karina here to, this was a tough one.
I agree on this one, because you know, what I was thinking is that one too, but enterprise strategy, isn't that the board's decision? And then, you know, where it's not enterprise IT strategy? That's why I struggle with that. Okay?
So, yeah, so, this is harped on a lot in COBIT, and COBIT does talk about, you know, when you have a vision, you have to have that vision satisfy something. And basically, if you look at this question from that perspective, you have to say, my vision is going to satisfy what? It's going to satisfy my value proposition. Right? So, it's definitely not organizational structure. The roadmap is what you use to execute that vision. The strategy, kind of the same kind of answer. But basically, COBIT tells us that you have to kind of set that vision based on, why are you doing it, right? And so, and then, why are you doing it is really your value proposition. So, I'm going to do.
It is D. And the long answer is ISACAS COBIT 2019 framework, Governance and Management Objective State. The Architecture Vision provides a first cut, high-level description of the baseline and target architecture, covering the business, automation, data, application, and technology domains. The Architecture Vision provides the sponsor with a key tool to sell the benefits of the proposed capabilities to the stakeholders within the enterprise. The Architecture Vision describes how the new capabilities, in line with the INT strategy and objectives, will meet enterprise goals and strategic objectives, and address stakeholder concerns when implemented.
Yeah, I can say it. That's a mouthful. Okay, so, when you go, Karina, here, 1-0-0. It's like pickleball scoring, right? Anyways, there you go.
Number two. Which of the following findings from an audit IT governance is a major concern for the Board of Directors? Is it A, IT-related projects are approved by the head of the IT department? Or B, IT-enabled investments do not align with the business goals? C, information security policies are approved by the CEO? Or D, cost of IT operations are not included in business operations? Kelly, you are up first on this one.
Well, as you are reading through those, to me, it really boiled down to just one. It seems like this was one of the easier ones to answer. My answer to that is, of course, IT-enabled investments do not align with business goals, because that is the major, major concern for the Board, Board of Directors for a company, making sure that all departments are aligned with business goals. That seems to fit right in with everything else I've learned with the CGEIT training. So, I'm going to go with B.
Okay. Karina?
Yeah, so, the IT department at the pharmaceutical company is going to be a little different from the IT department at the bank, is going to be a little different from the IT department in retail. They're going to be similar in many ways, but they have to align to the business goals at the end of the day. Now, if there's a ton of money that's being spent in IT that doesn't support those goals, because IT is really there to support the business, then that is a problem. I would say that that's a problem. So, I'm going to go with the same answer as Kelly and choose B as well.
Garrett?
Yeah, and that's pretty much it. You can pretty much guess on the test, the ones that say, basically, business goals trump everything else. Yes, that's B.
And it is B. It's effective IT governance ensures that IT-enabled investments are aligned with business goals.
Happiness.
Question three. Oh, are you advancing?
There you go. I know. Go for it, Bill. My bad.
An enterprise is struggling with legacy systems and aging infrastructure in their data center. Which of the following approaches would be most beneficial to address this concern? A, create a business case to outsource data center operations? B, create a formal technology lifecycle management program? C, increase available budget to replace systems? D, recruit additional expert skilled resources? Karina?
So, all I remember is that mechanical things break, right? All the time, we hate for them to, whether it's a car, washing machine, or a bicycle. Also, computers as well. So, what you need to really understand is, what is the life cycle of that equipment, right? What is, what can you project to be a refresh cycle? And sometimes, it's kind of a black hole, but a lot of times, you can hang your hat on a warranty that's coming up, right, on a support structure in your contract that might be coming for renewal. Maybe you can change that around based on the behavior of the assets, that, you know, this is where really good incident management becomes super important, so you can track up against that asset, whether or not it's time for renewal. So, you know, there's a whole things that you, there's a lot that you can do with data, with equipment. But I think understanding the life cycle of that equipment is most critical, whether it's at someone else's facility, even if it's somewhere else, you need to know what the costs are to do an upgrade, right? Because maybe you're going to run out of that initial cycle that they're offering you a better price for. Of course, people are important. The technology itself is important, but these are all things you need to consider as you're building out that lifecycle management program, and giving yourself a little bit of planning on what's going to happen with those assets.
Garrett?
This is such a Kelly question, because this is his life. You know what I mean? I literally know what he does, driving to Vegas and back and all that kind of stuff. But I know his life. But yeah, I mean, of these, I mean, come on, you know, and I know how Kelly, when I look at questions, I actually think, what would Kelly do? You would create a plan of what we have to execute on, right?
Yeah, yeah, that would be, you know, a formal technology lifecycle management program helps your organization plan, but also manage and upgrade all of your technology assets, devices, you know, everything. So, to have that plan, and when I was reading through this, it's like, create a business case to outsource data center operations. That actually might be part of your technology lifecycle management program. Increasing the available budget, of course, is going to be part of that program as well, and then recruit additional expert skilled resources. You might even consider that in part of your lifecycle management program, if you are planning far enough out for, you know, some big new technology expansion or growth. So, yeah, B would definitely be my answer there.
It is B, and the answer is, in order to address the possible obsolescence of information technology, the organization must identify a lifecycle that spans from acquisition to retirement. All right, number four. Which of the following best supports senior management in making decisions on IT project timeline priorities? Is it A, an independent technical expert? B, use of IT with market leaders? C, use of IT by competitors? D, well-documented business cases? And Kelly, you're up.
Well, the only, the only answer that really makes sense to me is D, well-documented business case. So, that, you know, a business case is going to provide an analysis of potential benefits, costs, alignment with business objectives, and that type of information. So, an independent technical expert, I don't know how that's really going to support a senior management, manager making a decision on those types of projects. Use of IT with market leaders, okay, but your market may not be other people's markets, and it may not apply as well, but, you know, and then use of it by your competitors. I've never judged or based a decision off of what my competitors are doing. So, I'm going to go with D.
Okay, Karina?
Yeah, so, D is definitely the right answer for this one. Remember, that business case is also going to include the prioritization that align to how the business is benefiting from this IT project, right? What is the value add going to be? And what are you trying to achieve and gain? Is it more customers? Is it a higher revenue? Is it, right? So, your investment into that project is going to garner you what? And that what needs to align to that, to the business objective of your company and the business departments within your company. So, it definitely is D.
Garrett?
Yeah, just the business case answer in these is usually the right one. I just saying, from taking a test and doing the QAEs on it, so it's the business case answer. Take away with the ISEC answer on that, Bill.
Yeah, that's, that is definitely D, and decisions on IT initiatives are based on business cases, which combine business contribution and the risk profile of the projects.
And you think the way they want you to think in this test and all that, and Karina does it based with her COBIT background, is they want the, this is, the test is written for someone being in the, well, in Kelly's position of the CIO or CISO, and they want you to think enterprise, and they want you to think with a plan. And, you know, you start with a plan and then execute the plan. So, the well-documented business case is the right answer.
All right, number five. The most important objective of the risk management project is to, A, help IT manage risk more efficiently and effectively? B, establish controls to strengthen the risk profile? C, conduct control self-assessment workshop? D, enable successful execution of the corporate strategy? Garrett?
Yeah, I was looking for one, Karina, on this, because they say it to establish communication between the ranks, and it's not on there, because I know that's an answer to a different one. Okay, but with that not being on there, I'm going to go with D. Basically, because you come up with the corporate strategy, and then the risk management is just supposed to make sure that the team and the parts and the parcels are in place to execute on the corporate strategy, and then the risk management project is supposed to highlight where this is not going along, which kind of is that other answer, the other answer that said, when, hey, what's the biggest concern for management? And the biggest concern of management is when the IT department is not in line with the corporate strategy. So, I have to go with D.
Okay, Karina?
Yeah, so, um, I would lean towards A, if IT wasn't in there, right? So, the fact that it's, that it says IT very clearly, help IT manage risk more efficiently and effectively, that negates the answer, because risk is corporate-wide, right? Sure, IT is a very important part of risk management, but it's, they're not the ones that are solely responsible for risk management as far as mitigation and planning and, you know, control activities. So, the, the established controls, I always love talking about controls, because many of the risks that we manage are failed controls. They reflect those failed controls. And so, when you have a good set of controls, you can manage that risk better, because you know what it is, because the controls are actually applicable to your functional organizations. It's definitely not C, self-assessment. Great exercise, not always very accurate, because there's an inherent bias. And again, this is one of those situations where you don't know where risk falls in the company, right? Because if risk management is in IT, you might get a different result if, you know, the chief risk officer reports directly to the CEO, bypassing the IT. Or sometimes, I've seen risk management under a CIO or a CISO, so it really, and that makes it myopically IT, and it's not just IT. So, what I'm going to do is come back to D and say, there's that corporate strategy and those business objectives, and say that D is the right answer for this one.
Kelly?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that 100%. Successful execution of the corporate strategy is, you know, risk management is fundamentally about assessing mitigating risks that could impede the organization's achievement of their strategic objectives, as well as, which is, of course, their corporate strategy. So, answer D clearly makes the most sense.
And D it is. It says, the answer is, the most important purpose of having risk management process is in an enterprise, is to ensure that the corporate strategy is executed successfully and that corporate goals are achieved. Number six. Which of the following roles is best suitable for classifying information assets of your organization? Is it A, business owner? B, data custodian? C, business stakeholders? Or D, chief risk officer? Karina?
I want to take this one. Thank you for noticing my kind of fidgeting here. For those of you who know what a CMDB is, a configuration management database, this is where your CI's are, your configuration items. It's a hub-and-spoke kind of model when you design it. These are your, all of your technology resources, your people, your processes and your technologies, right? Across the company. There are going to be technology components in that CMDB, in your configuration management database, that really should only have a technical presence. So, we used to, a few engagements ago, we created a CMDB that had two owners, a business owner and a system owner. The system owner was the one that would execute the technical aspect of that configuration item, keeping it updated, patching it, whatever was the case. But the business owner had to be present. They had to be present at the change advisory boards when their configuration item was involved, right? They had to play an active part in understanding what the impact was for that technical item in this case, was to their business. So, so it is really important to have the business specify what kind of data elements they have, and probably execute with the system owner. So, these were subjective names that were given to these roles. So, if I put my CGEIT hat back on and my COBIT hat on, I'm going to say that the business owner is really the best person to do that information asset classification, so that that can go downstream and all of your downstream protections, right? Your, do I encrypt or not? Do I back up? How frequently? How often do I purge this information? Who's got access to it? You know, go see Garrett. Those kinds of things, those are all part, those also always stem from data classification. So, that would be A.
Okay, Kelly?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. We've always left, at least in the organizations I've worked for, you know, the business owners are inevitably responsible for the, for the information and processes that they own for their specific business area. So, they definitely have the best understanding of its value and, you know, criticality, sensitivity, you know, things which, you know, they may not quite understand regulatory requirements or that type of thing. But as far as, you know, how to classify that information for your, for the business, definitely the business owner. Data custodian, in our, in our world, my world, they're the one that executes. I think that'd be the technical that you mentioned, Karina.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's almost like a, like a GDPR term as well, right? It hasn't really infiltrated the data processor, the data custodian, the, right? So, I mean, we've got NIST saying data storage, transportation, and processing, those are NIST guidelines. In B2, but custodian, more of kind of a GDPR term still.
Yep, yep, very familiar with GDPR. But, yeah, business stakeholders, they might be business stakeholders, but there may not be your line of business stakeholders. So, that's kind of a questionable response there. And the CRO, they're going to be more on the compliance side, at least in my world. So, yeah, business owner would definitely be my answer as well.
Okay, Garrett?
Yeah, this is really a great question, because it is, I did a lot of reading lately on the NIST AI RMF, Rich Manamind Framework, which shamelessly plugging Bill, our webinar for next week, which we're doing with the Bill and Ted Show, which is on AI governance. And the AI governance does call this out, and I like where he went through with Karina, that, you know, data custodian, haven't heard of much. Well, the more we work with AI, the more we're going to hear about it, okay? Because there is someone that owns the data, but then there is someone who is managing the data. And the AI RMF basically spells out that you quantify those, okay? And that you, and yes, Bill, you have a review, and you document who those users are, and those are attested to. But ultimately, and that's the way the CGEIT is written, everything is ultimately, where does it always roll up to? It says, you know, Kelly and Karina said, it rolls up to the business owner.
Ah, that is correct, and the official answer is, data owners are best positioned to classify information assets. Generally, data are owned by the respective business head. Others can provide input, but the final decision is made by the data owner, typically, the business owner. The business owner would, should decide on the classification or sensitivity.
Oh, and number seven.
Number seven. An enterprise is struggling with disjointed business processes in large information silos. Executive management seeks to streamline and automate business processes. Which of the following would be most strategic, would be the most strategic approach by the IT organization to support this business objective? Would it be, A, ensure IT management is part of solution procurement activities? B, integrate enterprise architecture into the change management program? C, establish a change advisory board to oversee IT changes? Or D, document business processes with the enterprise architecture repository? Garrett, you're up, and now I see that business processes again.
Okay, I want to see the following is most strategic approach. Is the most strategic approach to adding it to support this business objective? I have to go with B, because the test and the writings were real big on the architects, enterprise architect, being used not as a, just a one-time document, but actually to help in the processes of making decisions. So, I'm going with B.
Okay, Kelly?
That would be my choice as well, and the key word that really stuck out to me was strategic. Most strategic approach in a, you know, GRC and governance perspective, when you're, when you're dealing with strategy, especially when it comes, you know, in this situation, the enterprise architecture into the change manager program, as far as that integration, that would be the most strategic, high-level approach in my mind.
Okay, Karina?
Yeah, so, my eye originally went to documenting business processes, because that's like something that's very, very critical. But then I kind of started thinking about the change management process, and really, your input, so, C needs to be included in your change management competency area is a default. You have to have a change advisory board as part of your, you know, your cab and your E-cab, your emergency cab. That's a, that's a baseline, right, that, that you have to get that approval, and you have to understand the mechanics on how to get that approval, whether you need, you know, four approvals out of seven, whether you need two particular signatures of particular people. I mean, every company is different. So, I think enterprise architecture into the change management program makes the most sense, because you can ask You can actually look at the overarching flow of work for change management. And if you're making those considerations about enterprise architecture. And actually, I can think of three people right now I've had this conversation with, then. It's reflected in that overall change management program, so I'm going to go with B.
Yeah, the answer is B, and the official answer is integrating. Enterprise architecture into the planning process should enable a holistic view of the current landscape. And operations of the organization. Enterprise architecture should look at the current and future-based objectives, including centralization. And integration of business processes with information assets. Number eight, which of the following best determines that sufficient resources exist to meet strategic objectives? A resource availability analysis, B. Project risk analysis, C gap analysis, or D resource turnover analysis? Karina?
Can I do a really quick definition? Again, the word resources, three things, people, process, technology, right? So whenever the word resources is used in CGIT. Instantly remove anything that isolates specifically to one of those three things. Which means A and D are off the table. You can't only look at resources, availability and resource turnover. As the resources in IT, right? So. I'm going to say gap analysis, but it has to include all of those resources, right? Sufficient resources. IT, do we have enough equipment? Do we have enough people? And have we provided everyone the processes? Now, when I say everyone, I mean, have we provided the humans the processes to do their job successfully? And operationally define what our controls are, but also. Have we? Have we put everything in place to make sure that the techno, that the technical assets, the things with an on-off switch. Actually have that life cycle that we talked about a few questions ago, right? So all of those resources kind of go into consideration and you have to do a gap analysis against all of them. So the answer on this one is C.
Hey, Garrett?
Oh, can't hear you.
Oh, you went, you went rogue on us.
Say it again.
Yeah, you're breaking up.
There you go, gap analysis, C is, is the answer that I remember giving for this or whatever. Though I did struggle with A, but then I did what Karina did, actually look up the definitions of it. So I know you have those memorized, Karina, I have to look them up, so yes. There you go, so when I looked up the definitions, it's gap analysis.
Kelly?
Yeah, I would go with gap analysis as well because to me, that's the definition of gap analysis. Comparing the current state of resources and processes, capabilities. That you're, you know, as far as the desired future state to identify those gaps, so. Gap analysis is definitely what my choice for that question.
And that is correct, gap analysis identifies the gap between desired requirements. And the current state and best determines the shortfall of resources. Number nine. Which of the following is the best mechanism to help ensure that IT-enabled business? Investments accurately identify and respond to a changing operating environment? Is it A, business case reviews, B, post-implementation review? C, IT project risk management, or D, change management? Kelly, you're up.
What I've been reading of late. And I can't really identify more than that, Karina can probably expand and Garrett definitely for. But when I read this and I read, you know, D, C, B, and A. The only one that made sense to me was the business case review. And the best mechanism to help ensure IT-enabled business investments accurately identify and respond to a changing operating environment. The business case review in that it, it, it's really the only one that made, made sense to me, so. Karina or Garrett, you know, can you expand on, on that?
Karina?
Yeah, so. So if you look at B and C, right? If you look at change management as a competency, change management, once you have change management approves. A change, it goes to release management. And once that release happens, you have a PIR, right? So that's B. So B is very, very isolated to change management, I'm sorry, it's B and D, right? So, so B is one of the kind of artifacts or deliverables. As part of D, which is change management, so. You're gonna take those two off the table instantly as you're answering the, this question, right? Uh, project risk management, sure, very important, but again, it opens with IT. And again, when we're talking about business investments. All we're going to do is we're going to come back as high as possible to that business than all of our available answers, and in this case, that's A. That's business case reviews is really what's going to give you that, that kind of. Business investment answer that you're looking for, for this one, so it's, it's A on this one.
Garrett? Can't hear you, you're going rogue on us again.
Can't hear me?
Now we're there.
Ace is, what do you call that, the background blocking, noisy daughter back there. Okay, so, yes, yes, I do, there you go. The, the answer, it, once again, it's, there's two things that I found in the test that were on and on again. One was the enterprise architecture is a living document and your business case is a living document. So that's, that's what I really got out of this. There was a third thing I got out of this, we're working on with a partner, Bill, is also the, the business scorecards, okay? So, but, but that was, as the test goes, the business case reviews and the enterprise architecture. Is really, is, is the answer, sir, and so in this case, business case reviews.
Yes, and that's correct, conducting business case reviews as conditions change. Ensure proper focus and alignment for the IT-enabled investment.
Yes.
So number 10. Which of the following provides an overall risk status of the enterprise? Is it A, risk management?
Garrett?
Yes, is it B, risk analysis? Is it C, risk appetite, or D, risk profile? Garrett, you're up.
Risk status of the enterprise, risk status. I, I'm, I'm just going to go with, with C because I know that comes up, but in many ways, it should be in my brain, it should be risk status would be. I'm just going to go with C.
All right, Karina?
I'm torn between risk management and risk profile. I'm going to go with risk management, A.
And Kelly?
I. As I'm reading through that, overall risk status of the enterprise. And it's probably because I've done some very recent studying on the overall risk status of the enterprise. But it, the, what I understand is risk profile. Is a comprehensive view of the organizational risks. The short answer there, so. It seems to me that risk appetite, you know, that, that would be, of course, what the, what the organization is willing, willing to accept as risk. The analysis, of course, is very important, which is where you identify, you know, what risk is associated with. Some particular process or control or something along that. Risk management was, was actually my first choice. The risk management, of course, at the enterprise level is, is, that, that's key. But when I look at the overall risk status, that, to me, that, that risk profile meets the definition, so I, I'm, I'm going to pick D.
And you are correct.
That looks like the right one, risk profile, well done.
The risk profile provides the current overall portfolio of identified risks. To which the enterprise is exposed, because the profile is updated with evolving and new risks. It provides the enterprise's current risk status. Right, number 11. Which of the following is the primary benefit of integrating enterprise architecture practice? Within strategic planning processes? Which is the primary benefit of integrating enterprise with the strategic planning process? It enables A, a long-term decision-making. About incorporating business requirements into IT plans. Or B, executive management to better understand IT solutions. C, documentation of IT policies and procedures. Or D, IT personnel to better understand strategic plan formulation. And implementation procedures. Kelly?
I was afraid you'd say that.
I'm just, I'm just rotating.
I don't even understand what that question is, it's, it's, it's a mouthful, that's a crazy.
And I, I, yeah.
The benefit of integrating enterprise architecture practices within strategic planning processes. Okay, so integrating enterprise architecture aligns IT. Plans with the business objectives and the overall strategy. So. Starting from the bottom, IT personnel to better understand strategic plan formulation, implementation procedures. That seems a way too low level to be an option. Documentation of IT policies and procedures, that's, that's a function of, of documentation, that's. Part of any. Action, whether it's the strategic plan, putting that together, so that seems too low level. Executive management to better understand IT solution, which is very helpful, but is it a? Primary benefit of integrating the architecture practices? I don't think that would be. Let's see, okay, so A, a long-term decision-making about incorporating business requirements into IT plans. Yeah, I'm a miss here. A kind of makes more sense to me, but. Executive management's a better, no, I'm going to have to go with A, yeah.
Okay, Karina?
Yeah, so if we kind of break down the question, which is what I've been trying to do. So there's enterprise architecture, which is kind of its own thing that I'm holding in my hand. Right, and I want to integrate it with strategic planning processes. So we had a question a few back that talked about. You know, incorporating enterprise architecture into the overall change management kind of practice at the company. So now we're saying we have this thing called enterprise architecture, and we want to include it in strategic planning processes. And I'm going to do the same thing that Kelly did and kind of go up from the bottom. It's not about IT personnel, for sure. I mean, what is it enabling? It's, it's enabling IT personnel and then some. So that answer is not the right one because of that. It does enable IT policies and procedures, which I'm always a huge advocate of because we just don't want to do it well enough. I think as an industry, but I think it shouldn't just stop there. Executive management, would they kind of get something out of this? Sure. They may understand IT solutions a little bit better, or maybe they'll say, why are you giving me this detail? So I don't think that that's the answer. Long-term decision-making about incorporating business requirements into IT plans. I think that is, that has to be the only answer because the other ones are not the right answer, so I'm going to go with it.
Garrett?
Yeah, it's just sort of took the test, I remembered it. The test was basically always saying anything long-term, I always matched up with the enterprise architect. So that's, that's the way I, I answered that one, which is, though I was a little confused about. Enterprise architecture practices, I don't know what a enterprise architecture practice is, you don't really. Practice an architecture, Kelly, do your, does your team practice an architecture? I know, maybe I'm misusing a word, but I, I said, that's one of our best questions, and I, and I rechecked, that is the real question, so. Take it away, Bill.
Yeah, it's a, an enterprise architecture framework provides principles. And practices for creating and using the architecture description of a system. It structures architects' thinking by dividing the architecture description into domains. Layers or views and offers models. Using these concepts, EA supports long-term decisions for incorporating business requirements into IT architecture. And plans. Number 12, an enterprise has just experienced a breach resulting in major information loss. And is concerned about reputational damage. Which of the following should the chief information officer do first? Is it A, notify executive leadership? B, review the risk management methodology? C, create a crisis management plan? D, update the risk mitigation strategy, or E, find a new job?
Could I take this one, please?
Sure, take it away, Karina.
Okay, so this is really, really important for publicly traded companies. That have to file with the SEC, should they have a breach, a material weakness breach, right? First thing is you're supposed to have an incident management response plan already in place, and you have to be able to prove that. Should you ever get asked that it's been there in place to start with? Now, let's say you have a breach. Please, everyone, if you get one message out of this entire call. Drill an emergency through of a material weakness incident, please. Drill it, see whether or not your SOC operator, or your NOC operator, or your tier two, or whoever is sitting. Reading that scan or looking at that vulnerability, whatever that entry point is. See how it hops through your organization. See if you can fulfill that four-day, that four-business-day requirement that the SEC put out top of 2024. You're going to have a lot of different people involved. You're going to have legal, you might have HR, you might have vendor management, you might have finance. Right, you might, you're probably going to have finance because they're probably the ones that are going to actually file that report, that 8K or that 10K. With the Securities Exchange Commission. Know who that is, just practice it, pretend it happens Tuesday at 2:30 next week. And see what happens, see whether when legal receives a notification. Whether they can pivot and turn that around fast enough and get the approvals and engage with the vendors and do that entire workflow now. I have to say, please, for anyone in a technical position that might receive that first. Now, I have to say, please, for anyone in a technical position that might receive that first trigger, do not pick up the phone and call the S E C. I beg you, it's actually happened. Unless companies are giving folks instructions on what they should be doing, they're gonna wanna do the right thing and pick up the phone and call the Securities Exchange Commission. Please make sure you're giving your staff ample instructions on what the procedures are and keep reiterating them. Now, if you, if your enterprise has just experienced a breach, and I'm getting back to this question, reputational damage, whatever kind of damage, credit damage, whatever kind of damage, what's the first thing you're doing? Notify executive leadership. Do not call, you should have a communications plan already in place uh, that's inwardly facing and outwardly facing, right? Especially if you're talking about reputational damage. Identify all of the folks in this thread. Identify what that workflow looks like. Make sure it's tagged in a certain way so that you can meet that four-day requirement, right? Um, if you are somebody that finds out about this sort of a breach, the only one thing you do is notify executive leadership and hope to God or to whoever you, you wanna hope to, that there is a plan that's in place. And hopefully you've already participated in that plan. You already have those instructions and you've drilled through them. So the only answer on here is A.
Garrett?
Yeah, I just said, or Incent Sales posted an article about that, basically saying, you know, uh, you know, that you do have to notify, or if you're a publicly traded company and notify you have a breach, but I agree with Karina, that's not the first thing you do, you know? The first thing you do is, is call Cynthia Stamer, who is our, our favorite, uh, uh, legal attorney in this case. Cause she had a, she had a sign for the, uh, L A ISACA. Oh, is that the I C square? Which one is it, uh, Karina? It's the L A I S S A. And I use it in my pre-则, so she says, she pointed at the crowd. She pointed at the crowd. I use this in a slide, Bill, you know what I'm talking about? She points at the crowd and says, have your evidence. If you don't have your evidence, like Kelly, Kelly's job, right? That have your, not only do the security, but have your evidence that you're doing a security, because that's what comes after the breach, is to do diligence on your systems, saying, did you, did you practices, the procedures that you put in your 10 Ks and your 10 Qs and all that stuff, right? Like SolarWinds got in trouble. But rambling here, the first thing you do is ne, notify executive management so they can call Cynthia Stamer. There you go.
Kelly?
Yeah, um, first, the first rule, um, to know in an incident man, management plan or whatever, um, is, you know, uh, notification of executives. The, it's, it's, it is absolutely crucial to promptly, um, inform about a breach. Um, and the, especially the, if there's information lost especially, um, because they need to, the executive leadership team, um, needs to be aware of the incident so they can assess the situation itself and then provide the guidance and next steps, you know, which is, you know, execute plan, um, generally. And it, it, it also, it, it potentially can initiate, I think what they call it is a, a, a crisis, crisis response plan. Um, so in the A, B, C, D, there, you know, update risk ma, mitigation strategy, you know, that, that, that would be the wrong decision is to try to update a, a mitigation strategy for that. Creation of a crisis management plan, as, as Karina said, that should already be in place. Um, as well as the management methodology. Um, there's no reason to review that. Um, notify executive leadership is clearly the right answer here. And, and to Karina and Garrett's points, that is the most important thing, um, to do is to notify the leadership and then those next steps, um, all and up to notifying the S E C or, or whatever regulatory board it might be in control of your, um, specific company. Uh, it all starts with notifying executive leadership.
So can I add one more thing? I'm sorry, Bill, I wanna add one more thing. And, and it's gonna be kind of an unpopular thing to say and, uh, some people actually get offended at me for saying this. Uh, the way to alleviate the sky-is-falling technician, right? Who sits at the help desk and runs around chicken without a head, oh no, it's the end of the world, is to provide them more instructions. Most of the time, people jump to conclusions because they don't know what to do. They take their job seriously and they, they're afraid something horrible is happening. And it might happen three times a day. And that might be dubbed the sky-is-falling technician. And then you get a boy-that-cries-wolf syndrome. Then all of a sudden, whatever they say, people mute that person out. When people react that way, all that tells me as an advisor to companies is you have not provided them enough information to make that determination accurately. So they go to the extreme and get panicky and worried. So again, it comes back to documentation and having that plan already in place as far as what they're supposed to do.
So the answer is A. And the official, uh, line is, in the event of a major breach resulting in major information loss, the C, chief information officer should immediately notify executive management about the information loss because of the potential impact to customers, stakeholders, and the enterprise's reputation. So we got about four minutes, Garrett. Just level setting.
Let's go last one. Lucky 13.
Lucky 13. Which of the following activities must be the primary focus while defining the process for monitoring I T resources? Is it A, mitigating the risk of non-availability of resources? B, defining appropriate monitoring threshold, thresholds? C, evaluating performance against requirements? Or D, automating, automating the monitoring process? Uh, Kelly?
Uh, let's see, which of the following must be primary focus while defining the process for monitoring I T resources? Breaking that down a little bit. Uh, defining a process for monitoring I T vers, uh, resources. Um, mitigating the risk of non-availability of resources would not fall within that process for monitoring resources. Um, that's mitigation, that's not monitoring. Finding appropriate monitoring thresholds, that is important, uh, but I wouldn't call it the primary focus. Um, evaluating performance against requirements. To me, that one smells very much as the correct answer, but let's look at D as well. Automating the monitoring process. That's a technical or a functional thing, um, so I would not consider that primary. So I'm gonna have to go with C is evaluating performance against requirements. Uh, because that's, that would be defining how I T resources will be monitored, um, ensuring their performance aligns with what is always the most important in, in C G E I T is the organization's, uh, objectives. So I'm gonna go with C.
Karina?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with C as well. And actually, I would have broken it down exactly like Kelly did, so, uh, I second that.
Garrett?
Uh, closer to the microphone.
We got that loud daughter in the background.
Well, there you go, stop slumping. Reminds me of fourth grade Southside Elementary School. Okay, there you go. Uh, is, and answer these questions this way, think the way I did when I took this. What would Kelly say? And I mean that, right? Cause that's what you're supposed to do. The, the test is, how would a CISO respond? What would he think his job would be? And as an enterprise officer of the company, how would he, what would he really want to get done? Okay? And that's where C is, again, is the right answer. Evaluating performance against requirements. It's like, oh, that, I figured out what the requirements were. When I go write my tools and my monitoring, what am I measuring? I'm not measuring some hypothetical, I'm measuring metrics. And I love, and I, guys, I do say it, and we'll say what we get out of this, is the need and the desire, desire and a need for metrics and governance. So this is actually a good question to wrap this up, is what, that's what I got out of this C G I T in the whole process, is that governance is important, that's, this governance is, is about meeting corporate objectives. But to do so, we need some metrics. It's not, you know, okay, kind of good, you know? What is, what is kinda good or good enough? Come up with the requirements and then when we do our monitoring, it should be against the metrics. And that's, that's literally what we're doing, Bill, with, uh, ComplianceRus.io and doing with the U A test product. So I actually like this question. I go with C.
Yeah, so the official answer is C, while defining the resource monitoring process, it is most essential to focus on evaluating performance of I T resources against current business requirements and demands. This helps management in making necessary adjustments to resource optimization. And that.
I'm sorry, go for it.
Uh, I was just saying, that's, that wraps it up.
That's right, but let's, uh, I said what I got out of this. Uh, Karina, why don't you go next? What did you get out of these five series and, and the, uh, uh, the whole discussion of the C G I T?
What I got out of it is governance is pervasive. It addresses everyone and it satisfies the business requirements, right? Um, so you measure the requirements from the line of business. You optimize your delivery in I T. You look into the future and a lot of what governance calls for, people already have in place. They haven't strung it together, though. And so it's a little bit of piecemeal here and there, but to bring it all together and have that clear line of sight, it helps everyone, governance helps everyone. And I have to say, governance makes people's jobs easier. They think it's bureaucratic and they think that it's full of unnecessary process and they create these documents that sit on the shelf and collect dust for years. Don't write those documents. They're unnecessary. Write the documents that really make sense for your functional operations and measure against what your governance targets are in those documents. It's, it's a ten, G R sees a 10-point circle and so you can actually make it flow beautifully uh, in a, in a, in a, in a beautiful circle that actually drops you into continual improvement. You can start that cycle all over again. So, uh, this only reiterates, uh, what I, what I walk around and, and harp on. Right? Just do governance, uh, um, and this is a great resource for that.
I have, something I've learned through this is, um, governance, the more I learn about governance, and it doesn't mean, you know, the, the, the work we've done here with C G I T and, you know, cause I'm prepping for that exam as well. Um, the more I've learned over the different certifications I've taken, the different trainings, the different, um, webinars that I watch, the more you learn about governance, the lower the, the lower the heat, uh, is on understanding why well-run organizations do what they do. And it helps highlight how I can contribute to improving the overall business strategy or the functionality of the business. So it, it gives me an understanding to be able to talk at the board level. Um, and to understand why, you know, what a, a good board will do, um, you know, why they're doing it. And to, to me, that, that, that is the most value it brings to me.
All right, great. Well, with that, I wanna thank everybody for joining our last session and best of luck in, in taking your, uh, future test. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, happy summer, everyone. Bye, all.
Thank you.
Bye.